Welcome to Market City Commission Agenda, Monday, September 9th, 2013. Meeting called to order at 7:00 PM. Would you please join us in pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. City Clerk, roll call.
Yes, Your Honor. Commissioner Kim Benzey, Commissioner Coyne.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
Mayor Protem Neme.
Here.
And Mayor DePietro.
Here. Commissioner Kim Benzey had called me just a short time ago, and she's just going to be late. She's not going to be missing the meeting, so she's just going to be out probably during part of the public hearing. So with that, Commissioners, note of any agenda changes? Seeing no changes, Commissioners, Commissioner Ryan.
I move the agenda to be approved.
Thank you. Second, Commissioner Stonehouse.
Second.
Thank you. Anything further, Commissioner Ryan?
No.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
No.
All in favor of approving of the agenda, say yes.
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 Oppose. Motion passes six to zero. With that, we'll move to announcements. This is for current openings on volunteer committees and boards. Aging Services Advisory Committee, Housing Representative, one opening. Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, three openings. Harbor Advisory Committee, one opening. Housing Commission, one opening. Local Officers Compensation Commission, two openings. Market Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, one opening. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, one opening. Planning Commission, two openings. Police Fire Pension Board, one opening. Regional Recreation Authority Business Plan Ad-Hoc Committee, one alternate opening. Sister City Advisory Committee, four openings. And Traffic Parking Advisory Committee, three openings. With that, we'll move to public hearings, 01-REZ-08-13, public hearing to consider a rezoning request for 1213, 1215, and 1219 Grant Avenue. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. Background, on August 13th, 2013, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider an application for a rezoning of properties located at 1213, 1215, and 1219 Grant Avenue from General Residential, RG, to Community Business District, BC, and unanimously passed the following motion. It was moved by Clip, seconded by Moran, and carried six to zero after conducting a public hearing and review of the application and staff file review analysis for 01 REZ-08-13. The Planning Commission finds that the proposed rezoning is not consistent with the community master plan and hereby recommends the City Commission deny 01-REZ-08-13 for the following reasons. One, traffic congestion concerns, and two, the request does not follow land use recommendations of the community master plan. At their August 26th, 2013 meeting, the City Commission set a public hearing to review the Planning Commission's recommendation. A complete packet of background information for the request is provided. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, conduct a public hearing and consider the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny the request to rezone the property, alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. And with that, I'll open up this portion to public comment. Anyone wishing to address the Commission at this time? Anyone wishing to address the Commission at this time? Please state your name and physical address, please.
Taylor Clip, 300 East Crescent, Planning Commission, or Planning Commissioner. Just here to answer any questions, to clear up any discrepancies, or give you guys any context you need. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the Commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public hearing and turn it over to my fellow Commissioners. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Stonehouse.
I, um, I motion to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny the request to rezone the property.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Neme?
Thank You, Your Honor. I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse.
I think the Planning Commission has really gone through it very well. I think they've looked at the pros and cons of it, and I agree with their recommendation. I think this is the best way for the city to proceed.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme?
Well, I concur with Commissioner Stonehouse. The Planning Commission has given this matter, considered, uh, considered hearing and gave us their best recommendation, and I think we ought to support it.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner at this time? Commissioner Ryan?
Yeah, I'd say it's not a slam dunk for me, but I think the fact that the Planning Commission analyzes very carefully. I think some concerns were raised about changing the character of the neighborhood. I really like to see economic development go forward, and I think that this kind of development can be positive, but perhaps in this case, it's not outweighed by the changes that would occur in that specific neighborhood.
Thank you. Anything further, Commissioners? Seeing no further discussion on this, I'll ask the question. There's a motion by Commissioner Stonehouse, seconded by Commissioner Neme, to accept a recommendation of Agenda One, conduct a public hearing, and consider the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny the request to rezone the property. All in favor, say yes.
Your Honor, I think the motion is to accept the recommendation to deny, not to consider it, but to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission to deny this request.
Isn't that what I just said?
No, I think you said to consider it.
Well, delete that, "consider it." Thank you. I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose. Motion passes six to zero. Number two, public hearing, 02-REZ-08-13, public hearing to consider a rezoning request for 1212 and 1214 Grant Avenue. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Thank you. Background, on August 13th, 2013, the Planning Commission held a public hearing to consider an application for a rezoning of properties located at 1212 and 1214 Grant Avenue from General Residential District, RG, to Multiple Family Residential District, RM, and unanimously passed the following motion. It was moved by Clip, seconded by Schlegel, and carried six to zero that after conducting a public hearing and review of the application and staff file review analysis for 02-REZ-08-13, the Planning Commission finds that the proposed rezoning is not consistent with the community master plan and hereby recommends that the City Commission deny 02-REZ-08-13 for the following reasons. One, the request is inconsistent with the current master plan zoning map, and two, traffic congestion. At their August 26th, 2013 meeting, the City Commission set a public hearing to review the Planning Commission's recommendation. A complete packet of background information for the request is provided. Fiscal effect, none by this action. Recommendation, conduct a public hearing and consider the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny the request to rezone the property, alternatives as determined by the Commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. And with that, I'll open this portion of the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the Commission at this time? Anyone wishing to address the Commission at this time? Anyone wishing to address the Commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public hearing, turn it over to my fellow Commissioners. Also made a record show that Commissioner Kim Benzey is present at this Commission meeting at 7:10 PM. Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Snyder?
Yeah, I move that we approve the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny the request to rezone the property.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Snyder, anything further?
I think the arguments were well made on the previous public hearing. You know, I do share Commissioner Ryan's concerns about, you know, I don't want to stand in the way of something that would be potentially positive economic development, but I don't necessarily think that this movement towards spot zoning really does the trick for the city, so I don't really feel it's standing in the way, and I appreciate the Planning Commission putting in the effort to review this for us.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse, anything further?
Only that certainly I agree with the Planning Commission's recommendations on it. I think they did a very exhaustive study. Their recommendations are solid. I think we should support them.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner at this time? Any other Commissioner? Commissioner Kim Benzey?
Um, I guess, which is one thing, I think last meeting I spoke, my apologies for being late too, um, but I, I think I said at the last meeting that it was a Planning Commission that, um, I guess, you know, okay, the spot zoning, um, for the one next to it, and now, you know, and the City Commission approved it, now I feel like we're not approving it. So I, (laugh) it just seems, there's no consistency, I'll put it that way, and I guess, um, just, it sends a difficult message, I guess, to the community. Um, you know, either we're going to follow the master plan or we're not, year to year, I mean, I, I don't know. I feel like we've let it happen once, and now we're not letting it, so, kind of the damage is on the corner, as some might say, um, you know, and I don't know if we're preventing more, but I'm just, I guess my question is, is that, um, you know, if we're not going to change zoning, and if there's going to be spot zoning, I guess I just, I'm hopeful that we'll be a little more consistent, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Kim Benzey. Any other Commissioner at this time? Any further discussion, Commissioners? Seeing nothing, or seeing none? There's a motion by Commissioner Snyder, seconded by Commissioner Stonehouse, to conduct a public hearing and consider the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny the request to rezone the property. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose?
No.
Motion passes six to one, with Commissioner Kim Benzey voting no. You have that, City Clerk? Thank you. And with that, we'll move to number three, presentation. Beautification Committee, Father Marquette Statue Update by President Emily Lewis and Vice President Barb Kelly. Would you girls go up to the lectern over there? Thank you. You ladies.[842.13][842.13](laughing) It's just that you're young looking, so I go with the girls. Sorry about that.
Good evening. I'm Emily Lewis. I am the President of the Marquette Beautification Committee, and this is Barbara Kelly, the Vice President of the Beautification Committee. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you, a big thank you, to the City of Marquette and the City Commissioners for their support of the Marquette Beautification Committee again this year. Without your help, I think those flowers on South Front Street might not happen every year, so thank you. Now about the Father Marquette Statue Project. Eight years ago, the statue got cleaned, and it was our intention that we were going to restore the statue, and it just kind of got put on hold, until last year, we decided that we needed to move forward with this. So with the help of the city, with coordinating this effort, I'd like to thank Bill Vida, the City Manager, the City Commissioners, Carl Zugger, Parks and Rec, Tina Harris, Arts and Culture, and Ronald Keefe, City Attorney. They came up with a plan that we took possession of the statue for a year. And with that, we hired Venus Bronze Works. The person's name was Giorgio Gekas, who was a restorative artist, who came up and restored the reliefs on the side of the statue. If any of you had seen it, Father Marquette's head was missing, arms were missing, oars were missing, and they came up and restored the reliefs. Our goal was to have it all completed by July 15th, which we did, which celebrated the 100-year anniversary of that statue being in that location. On July 15th, we had a huge event, and it was immensely successful. It was a beautiful evening, and it was a collaborative effort, and I just would like to say that this was done by a number of organizations and groups in the city, and we wouldn't have been able to pull it off without them. First of all, the Arts and Culture Department really coordinated the event, the DDA, the Upper Peninsula Children's Museum, the Marquette City Band, the Marquette Regional History Center, the Wooden Canoe Heritage Association, Lake Superior Theater, Lake Superior Art Association, Marquette Maritime Museum, Lake Superior Community Partnership, Peter White Public Library, Doug Gens, and Jack Deal. And since this is our 35th birthday this year, we also made it a celebration of our birthday. And I just would like to say that a lot of area businesses provided all the refreshments that night, so it was a huge event, and I think, as Barb told me, almost all the City Commissioners were in attendance, and it was just a great event, so thank you very much. So as you can see, we now have completed Phase One of the project. But when we took this on, there were several goals we wanted to address, which was repair the reliefs, add lighting and landscaping, add handicapped accessibility, and fund the long-term upkeep of the statue. And another key thing that, as a committee, we wanted to do was to educate Marquette of who Father Marquette was and where the Father Marquette statue is, and I think we've accomplished that goal. With the help of the Lake Superior Youth Theater, they put on a play called "A Man Named Marquette," and it was written by the youth, and it was a wonderful performance, and I'd like to thank Sarah also for helping on that endeavor. The other thing was, I just would like to let you know that so far, we have raised almost $50,000. We just found out this week that the Frazier Fund is going to be giving us $10,000. So we have gotten support from the Marquette County Community Foundation, the Shyrus Institute, the Frazier Fund, and the Louis G. Kaufman Endowment Fund, and the Herbinan Foundation. So we have set out on a huge task, and now we're, Barb will kind of give you what we want to do next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just, excuse me, briefly, as we move forward to address these other goals that we have all shared about the Father Marquette statue in the park, our committee and the community all look forward to receiving specific directions and leadership from the City Commissioners, the City officials, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Arts and Culture, the Public Works, and the Engineering Department as we form a working partnership in the future. We hope to involve individuals in the community who would like to work with us as we plan for the park's future, to include security, lighting, accessibility, seating, signage, maintenance for our newly restored Father Marquette statue, and beautification. So in addition, many people in the community have contributed over the last eight years to this project. We would like to publicly thank all of them. We did have a criteria for a certain level of giving, where your name would be on a plaque, and we will be honoring all those people who have given at that level up to this point and in the future. We're very excited about this project. It's been very successful. It's been the most amazing collaboration I've ever worked on in the city, with all these groups coming together and just joyously working on this and providing a gift to the city. So thank you to all those people who helped, and every single person in the city who helped us. You were all very generous and kind, and very willing with your time, so we'd like to say thank you very much.
Uh, just a minute, girls.[1215.58][1215.58](laughing) Ladies, I'm sorry. This would never have happened if it wasn't for you two to spearhead this project, and you two left yourselves out of the picture. I know you said, put thousands and thousands of hours in, in telling, I know Barb had told her husband where to go and what to do, continuous on this project, and, and many other people, but you got everybody together to work as a team, and we can't thank you two enough. So when you go back, and at your next meeting, please pass on our thanks from my fellow Commissioners and I, and the rest of the city staff, and everybody else that gets to enjoy this now. Thank you, Zell, again.
Thank you.
And with that, we'll move to number four, proclamation, Drive For Pledges Day. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Whereas texting has become the way many people communicate today, which means some people are doing it at the worst possible time while they're driving, and whereas texting while driving is involved in over 100,000 motor veal crashes each year, often causing injuries and deaths, and whereas those who text while driving are 23 times more likely to be involved in some type of safety critical event as compared to those drivers who do not text while they drive, and whereas in 2009, AT&amp;T launched the public awareness campaign, "It Can Wait," to educate the public about the dangers of texting while driving by encouraging consumers to take the personal pledge not to text while driving. Now therefore, I, Johnny DePietro, Mayor of the City of Marquette, do hereby proclaim September 19th, 2013, as Drive For Pledges Day, to focus attention on the danger of texting while driving, dated this ninth day of September, 2013, and sign, Johnny DePietro, Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk. And we see this many times in TV commercials, where you see these 16, 17, 18-year-olds that were leaving school and heading home, texting their friends, saying, "Where are you?" And they did get into a fatality accident, and they never did make it home. So we understand this is a very serious issue, and the more that we can make proclamations like this and educate each other, it's not just the young people, but drivers themselves, but it's just sad when we see the high school ones and, and, uh, in college and that, that don't quite make it through the rest of their school year. So with that, I thank everybody very much. Thank you. And with that, City Clerk, we'll move to number five, proclamation, employer support of the Guard and Reserve Week. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Whereas National Guard and Reserve Forces comprise nearly half of our nation's military strength and are essential to America's national security, Reserve Component Forces stand ready to answer the call to serve, whether serving alongside active-duty counterparts across the globe, or, of course, are responding to humanitarian crises at home and abroad, and whereas employers provide critical support to members of the National Guard and Reserve, allowing citizen warriors to serve whenever the nation calls, often foregoing financial gain and making sacrifices in the process, and whereas employer support is stronger than ever, more than 41 years after President Richard Nixon authorized the Secretary of Defense to establish the National Committee for Employer Support of the Guard and Reserve, and whereas our nation is in debt to the citizen warriors, departing, uh, departing the comforts of home to ensure our freedoms remain intact, likewise, America pays special tribute to the commitment of dedicated, dedicated and supportive employers who continue to make service in the Reserve Components possible. Now therefore, I, Johnny DePietro, Mayor of the City of Marquette, Michigan, do hereby proclaim, September 22nd through the 28th, National Employer Support of Guard and Reserve Week, dated this ninth day of September, 2013, and sign, Johnny DePietro, Mayor.
Thank you, City Clerk, and this was another very, very important proclamation, and I thank the employers for doing that, and I thank my fellow Commissioners also for supporting this, so this is another very important proclamation. Thank you, everyone. And with that, we'll move to number six, which is boards and committees, and I want to welcome new member Rusty Ballers, who has stepped up to the plate to come on the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. Rusty, could you meet me up at the lectern? Thank you, Rusty. On behalf of my fellow Commissioners, the community, uh, the city staff, and everyone else, we thank you very much for coming on board for the Arts and Culture Committee, and one of the things we know that this will not be very boring, because there's a lot of things coming up on this advisory committee, so we appreciate it very much, and at this time, we'd like to present you a city pin for your volunteer to come on board, and at this time, I'd like to turn the floor over to you, because I know you wanted to say some things to my fellow Commissioners, to people in the audience, and also the people watching you on TV. Thank you, Rusty. Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I look forward to working with the Arts and Culture Committee. I've done a lot with the Arts and Culture throughout the last 30 years here in Marquette, and I'm hoping to give back a little bit and help maybe shape the future of Arts and Culture. Thank you.
Thank you again, Rusty.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move to public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in an item being moved up on agenda at the mayor's discretion. Anyone wishing to address the Commission at this time? Please state your name and physical address, please. Uh, you, oh, right here.
Ed Angeli, Chairman of the Market Board of Light and Power. I come before you tonight to give you an update on our status and to see if I can answer any more of your questions as we move through this difficult period. So far this month, we've canceled a boatload of coal, about $820,000. We postponed a turbine outage in the Number Three Plant, about a quarter of a million dollars. We deferred the rewiring of Specker Circle. It's about a 40-year-old system that's going to have some troubles very shortly because it's that old. We'll put that on the back burner. And I guess I tell you these things because some of the thoughts and comments before were about this grandiose list of things that we do, this list of, of items that maybe aren't that important. None of the things I'm talking to you about today are being canceled, other than the boatload of coal. And hopefully, we can make that up on the other side of the shipping season. Hopefully, we won't run short. The things we have on our list of things to do are things that have to be done to maintain the system, and we're going to continue to figure out ways to get by with what we have. Tree brushing is being put off for the next three months. Hopefully, the windstorms will be in our favor. We'll just, we'll make it. It's an ongoing battle for us. It's an ongoing question of where can we cut, what can we cut, and how can we make it work until we can get to a point where our finances are in a better position, and hopefully, that's following the October 28th meeting, it'll start going up. We look forward to that. If anybody has any questions, I'm here to answer your questions, but I will also tell you that if you want a one-on-one session with any one of the senior staff at the BLP, if you have a question, a concern, something you don't understand, give me a call, and I'll make it happen so that we can answer your questions.
Thank you very much, sir, and I'm sure that some of the Commissioners will be contacting you in the near future.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Please state your name, physical address, please.
My name is Scott Nevinhoven. I live on, uh, 128 East Main Street in Harvey. And I'd just like to reserve some time to talk, uh, item number eight on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time?
I'm Dave Campana, 1711 Grandview Drive, Marquette. Uh, I'm a member of the Brownfield Committee. And I'd like to reserve time to speak on item 12, just to answer any questions you may have on it.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time? Please state your name, physical address, please.
I'm Mike Florida. I live at, uh, 1302 North McClellan. And I want to thank Rusty Bauer for joining the Arts and Culture Committee. I've known Rusty as so many people have for so long. And I can't think of too many people who are more talented and more active in the arts than Rusty Bowers. And I think that's a great, great thing for the city. So, thank you, Rusty. I know he had to leave. Uh, but I also want to say that, uh, if you look at, uh, on the consent agenda, item number nine, I support that. I think it's a great idea, and I thank the commission for taking up that idea. There's so many great events in this city that people, uh, look forward to. I'm sorry, it's under New Business, number nine. And, uh, the opportunity for, uh, multiple high-impact special events to, to have many, take up many, many years to be able to reserve that time. And as I said, uh, you know, some of those events are so good that people just assume that they're gonna happen and look forward to them year after year after year. So, I think it's a great idea, and I support that, so.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time?
Frank Jeff Berito, 350 East Ridge, Marquette. These are my opinions. We appreciate the long-requested improvements to pedestrian safety. Please now place emphasis on the Third and Washington intersection and on Washington Street at McClellan Avenue. August 12th, Mr. Coyne mentioned that at the latter intersection, one must decide if they want to die or to go to the store, prompting Ms. Campenzi to snicker. There is no possible humor to this situation, especially for children, the elderly, and for people with disabilities, for whom it truly is a matter of life and death. August 26th, Mr. Coyne motioned to commit to three years of park use by the Blues Fest. Mr. Neme seconded, even though he admitted putting the cart before the horse. Mr. Ryan said this denies a public opportunity. He, Mr. Schneider, and Ms. Campenzi sought the three-year deal, but to follow the proper procedure, while Mr. Stonehouse sought to approve the next year only. Three of you voted to deny the public process. I believe Mr. De Pietro, Coyne, and Neme. The votes were hard to discern, and they were never sorted out at the meeting or in the minutes. We all like Blues Fests, so it's no big deal, other than that the three, other than the three members' latest breach of public process. And where is a record of this in the minutes? August 12th, someone recommended we use our $9,000 check to purchase fruit trees to plant along the East-West Trail Corridor. A great idea, because it benefits the public as a whole. If the money goes to this use, please retain the remaining natural habitat along the corridor, especially on the slope. Plant only in the grassy areas. September 3rd, at 5:30 PM at McCarty's Cove, a photographer awaited his subject's arrival to photograph them on the dune with the lighthouse in the background. The commission is occasionally reminded that most every outdoor photographer in town uses the same vantage. I politely mentioned the fragility of the grasses that hold our beach together, pointing to the obliterated top of the dune and the path to it. He replied that he pays more taxes than I do, as if the amount of taxes that someone pays entitles him to damage a priceless resource that belongs to everyone. Marquette is blessed with the greatest of people, except for an elite minority who think they're better than or are more entitled than the rest of us. It's all about them. He's yet another example of someone who's so blinded by his own cause, he loses sight of the splendor that led him to set his camera up there to begin with. The man refused to identify himself. Years ago, the city sent letters to all known photographers, asking them not to set their subjects on the dune grass. If the latest culprit pays so much in taxes, you ought to know who he is. Please send him and all local photographers the letter.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public comment. Move to number seven, to the consent agenda. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioners, uh, Coyne?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Neme?
I'll support it, but I have a slight change to that motion. We, we need to withdraw check number 57112 to Commissioner Snyder, so he may abstain from it, separate that out of the bill table.
Accept that change.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Neme, to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say yes.
With the exception...
Okay, as amended. That's what I meant to say. Delete that, present it, City Clerk.
Yeah.[982.00][982.00](laughter)
So, all in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion that we approve check number 57112 in the amount of $89.40 as reimbursement to Commissioner Snyder for travel.
Thank you.
It was to Escanaba, to the Governor's Economic Summit.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne, thank you. There's a motion by Commissioner Neme, seconded by Commissioner Coyne. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose? Motion passes six to zero. Would the record, would the record, is that right?
Yep.
Commissioner Coyne?
Yep.
Anyways, would the record show that Commissioner Snyder abstaining? Thank you. With that, we'll move to New Business, number eight, Lakeview Arena, Superior Hockey LLC. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, recently, the city has been approached by Superior Hockey LLC to establish a full-service hockey pro shop at the Lakeview Arena. Superior Hockey LLC recently acquired Marquette Hockey Incorporated, DBA Hockey Central. The desired space is the former Rangers office space on the west end of the building, approximately 1,000 square feet. They are requesting a three-year lease at $10 per square foot with consideration of site improvement fee relief. Fiscal effect, the Lakeview Arena fund would realize an additional, additional revenues of $10,000 annually with an approval of the lease request. Recommendation, direct the city attorney to prepare a lease agreement with Superior Hockey LLC to provide a full-service hockey pro shop at Lakeview Arena. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Can we make a comment on this?
Sure.
Citizen wants comment? Scott Nevinhoven wants comment?
Yes, that's right. Uh, Mr. Nevinhoven?
Well, we'd, uh, like I said in the agenda, that we just purchased a, uh, local business and would like to move it to Lakeview Arena, um, which, you know, if you're aware of the hockey world out here, there's not many, um, arenas in the Midwest that have a full-service, um, hockey shop in their rink. And Lakeview Arena is one of the probably most well-known rinks in the Midwest, if not in North, um, North America as well. And to, to bring a, a shop to this, to the rink, um, would make the lives of hockeygoers, hockey parents, players, their lives that much easier. We have spent a lot of time, um, researching this, and we know that this is the best place for this business to improve and to go above and beyond. So, we are asking for consideration, uh, to get into Lakeview Arena.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioners? Commissioner Snyder?
Um, I just have to recuse myself from discussion and voting on this issue. Um, the members involved with Superior Hockey LLC are clients of mine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
I move that we direct the city attorney to prepare a lease agreement with Superior Hockey LLC to provide a full-service hockey pro shop at Lakeview Arena and accept, uh, the person wanted to abstain from voting. Jason?
Okay, thank you very much. Seconded by Commissioner Stonehouse.
I will second that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne, anything further?
No.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
I think it seems like a, an excellent opportunity for both the city and the, uh, the, uh, the renters. So, let's, uh, let's support hockey.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I don't know that anyone can answer this, and I'm, I'm not opposed to it, um, but, but the thought struck me ju-just now. I didn't think about it as I was going through my agenda earlier. I, I don't want us to be in the position of subsidizing business against a competitor. And I, that's, that would be my only concern. Uh, is that something that resonates with anybody else, or is that a misplaced concern? You know, and I'm not in the hockey business, so I don't, I don't know what the competition is or, or not, but...
Did you, would you like...
I'm just raising the point. If no one wants to respond to it, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Neme?
I just have a question of staff. We note in here that there's going to be fee relief. I would assume that would be for the leasehold improvements. Do we have any idea of how much the improvements are going to be, what kind of rent we're gonna lot? So, we're giving an open check? It could be $30,000, which we'd put the shop in there at no cost to the, the owner, or what?
Um, what we've done in the past with lease agreements, um, if the leaseholder makes improvements that are to the advantage of the community for future leases, then it's considered. And that language is put into the, uh, the terms of the lease.
What would be an example of a improvement that would be to our benefit?
Um, well, this, the commission just approved a lease agreement with the U.P. Rowing Club for the, um, space on, under the observation deck, which currently is, um, raw space. Uh, they're actually gonna finish that out, um, with, um, drywall, um, um, lighting improvements, ceiling improvements, um, that would make it more attractive for future renting, uh, you know, more competitive rental space.
What would be an example in this, in this case? We'd be taking an office and turning it into a pro shop?
Um, you know, the entrance on the far west side right now is just sort of a, um, pretty generic entrance. It's one that staff uses when we, uh, go into the building for, um, IT supplies, these types of things, which that area is, is, houses some of our IT, um, excess IT equipment. That may be enhanced, um, that entrance. I guess that's, that's some of the things that we've talked about. Um, they may put in new carpeting. Uh, they may support the walls better, which would make it more independent space. Um, that may make it more attractive in the future. This location in Lakeview Arena really is the only location that would allow for, um, a 12-month, um, commercial space, because it does have its own independent loc-, you know, entrance. So, they can, uh, enter when, um, staff's not in the building for, you know, a security basis or reasons, you know? So, it really, if there's gonna be a commercial space, this probably is, is probably the best space for that.
Well, I think it's, I, I think it's a, a nice addition to the arena, like the, Mr. Nevinhoven mentions. It's, you know, and probably one of the only arenas around that will have an actual full-service shop, and, and people will have access from the exterior, apparently. But my concern is that we, we will be getting some revenue. This, this isn't the rowing club where it's a nonprofit. This is a profit-making enterprise. And, uh, if the, if it's $30,000 worth of leasehold improvements, we, in effect, collected no rent whatsoever, but gave them a nice location to, to, from which to make a profit. So, I think, uh, I would hope that, uh, and before the, the lease comes back, we'd know what the value of leasehold improvements are, so we can gauge that against the revenue that we're, we're expecting to receive.
Thank you, Commissioner Neme. Commissioner Campenzi?
Well, I, I guess that was kind of my question, and do we have an estimate of, of what those are?
We don't at this time. Um, like the agenda supplement reads, this is something that recently came onto the city's, um, the city's, was brought to the city's attention. And so, we can, we can seek that out and certainly bring that to the commission, um, at the next read. As you know, based on charter, it requires two reads, and so perhaps we can have that in, in addition to the lease agreement at the next meeting.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Campenzi?
I just, I want to add that I, I am in support of it. I, I think Commissioner Neme brings up, you know, some good points. So, if those could get cleared up, I think, um, next time, we should be all on board. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campenzi. Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing none. There's a motion by Commissioner Coyne, seconded by Commissioner Stonehouse, to accept the recommendation of agenda number eight and direct the city attorney to prepare a lease agreement with Superior Hockey LLC to provide a full-service hockey pro shop at the Lakeview Arena. I'll ask a question. All in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose? Motion passes six to zero, showing Commissioner Snyder abstaining. Thank you, City Clerk. With that, we'll move to number nine, City Commission Policy, Multiple Year High-Impact Special Events. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, the City of Marquette wishes to provide an orderly process that groups, individuals, and orgas-organizations may utilize to reserve city parks for multiple years for high-impact events. The high-impact, excuse me, a high-impact event is defined as an event generally considered to be open to the public regardless of whether a fee for admission is charged with one or, uh, with one or more of the following elements, where 250 people are expected to be in attendance, use of city personnel as requested or required, commercial, nonprofit, or for-profit financial benefit, includes significant, significant infrastructure such as setup of large tents, stages, amusements, concessions, or sale of alcohol. Only groups, individuals, and organizations that have a proven history of successfully providing annual high-impact events benefiting tourism, economic development, or other community development objectives, and are in good financial standing with the city, will be considered. Due to event size, location, and availability of facilities and services, the following city park sites are deemed to be most appropriate for holding high-impact events. Elwood Matts and Lower Harbor Park, uh, Prescott Isle Park, Sherris Park, and the Tourist Park. Fiscal effect, no fiscal effect with this action. Recommendation, following, or, excuse me, review and consider adopting a commission policy or guidelines for requesting multiple-year special event contracts for city park use for high-impact events. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will motion to adopt the city commission, rather, to adopt the, um, guidelines for requesting multiple-year special event contracts for city park use for high-impact events.
Thank you. Commissioner Campenzi?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Commissioner Campenzi. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, I think this does address an issue that we've discussed before. It puts some order into the process. I think it's a reasonable way to proceed, and, uh, I certainly support and commend the staff for, uh, being able to put it together on such short notice.
Thank you. Commissioner Campenzi?
I'd like to echo Commissioner Stonehouse and just say that as someone that deals with, um, sometimes booking artists, um, oftentimes, their schedules are two or three years out. So, this is huge. This is really important for the success of some of these events to keep going. So, um, I like it. It's a good start. You know, if there's any glitch, I think we can adjust it along the way. So, I'm just glad it's on paper and it's, um, you know, people know how long they have a space.
Thank you. Any other commissioner? Commissioner Ryan?
Just, again, a point, and, and again, I'm not against this. I certainly will support it, but, you know, in many cases, these events are partly subsidized by the city. Subsidized in the sense of forgiving some costs, so I, I don't know. I, I guess the question I'm asking is if we approve an event for five years, does that assume that, that we're obligated for five years of providing that support? I'd want to make sure that, that, that's not the case, you know? Because future commissions may have different ideas.
Right. Uh, Commissioner, uh...
Lot of head shaking going on.
Yeah. Uh, city manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, in no way does this obligate any future commission to provide any kind of promotional support, uh, or participation. It's exclusively for reserving the use of those, those, uh, uh... the use of those facilities beyond the current limit of one year.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Kembensee?
Well, I just wanted to say that that was my understanding, that this is strictly a policy for reserving, but not necessarily a lease agreement, I guess, or facility agreement.
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Seeing no further discussion. There's a motion by Commissioner Stonehouse, seconded by Commissioner Kembensee, to accept a recommendation of Agenda Number Nine, review and consider adopting a city commission policy, guidelines for requesting multi, multiple-year special events, special event contracts for city park use for high-impact events. Commissioners, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. That will move to Number Ten, Arts and Culture Master Plan Agreement. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, during the budget process, the city commission approved funding to pursue an arts and culture master plan. The intent is to provide the city with a 10-year strategic plan that will define the city's role in supporting arts and culture, and the role of arts and culture in accomplishing the city's broader goals. The planning, excuse me, the plan will result in a clear set of priorities supported through both policy and a commitment of city resources. Proposals were due on August 23, 2013. The city received two proposals. Staff has reviewed the proposals using a scoring matrix defined in the RFP specifications. The outcome of the review is as follows. Christine Harris Connections Creative Community Builders had a cost of $17,810 and a score of 512, and World Link Communications had a cost of $14,600 and a score of 313. The commission budgeted $15,000 toward the project in the FY 1314 budget. Fiscal effect: The Arts and Culture Division has $15,000 budgeted in the FY 1314 professional service budget. Any increase in the project cost would require a budget adjustment. Recommendation: Approve the Christine Harris Connections Creative Community Builders to conduct a community planning process for an arts and culture master plan in an amount not to exceed $17,800. Approve a budget adjustment and direct the city attorney to draft a contract. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Commissioners, what's your pleasure? City Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Well, I'm...
Commissioner Snyder?
I move that we approve the recommendation as read.
Okay. Is there a second? Commissioner Coyne? Commissioner Snyder, anything further?
I'm going to start off by saying I'm not normally a fan of spending a lot of money or money on a consultant to come in from out of town to work with us to come up with a plan, because I think that we have people in our community that are very capable of working to put together a very similar plan, some of whom may even be paid to run our arts and culture department. But I recognize that sometimes just having somebody come from outside of the community to do this is actually what we're paying for, more so than their ideas or abilities. You know, it's really getting somebody from the outside to come in and help us through that process. So in that, I'm in support. I know that our Arts and Culture Committee has gone through a number of issues over the last few years in trying to reidentify itself, so I think this is a step in the right direction. And then, third, a question for staff on the company that we're looking at going with, Christine Harris Connections. Is she at all related to our, okay, to our own city staff? I just have to check on that one publicly. Okay, thank you very much for that.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Thank you. I'd follow up with Jason's remarks. The arts and culture community really needs a plan, and I think it really is beneficial to have someone from outside to do it. And I also think if you read her curriculum, VITI, and experience, it is absolutely outstanding and very apropos to our specific needs here in this community for the arts and culture. So even though it's a little teeny bit more, I think it's worth the budget adjustment to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Well, I just wanted to address that question of more. And again, it may be the best choice, but I think anytime we do this, it's good to hear from staff as to why this one particular bid was scored so much higher. It's actually $3,000 higher, which is fairly substantial on a $17,000 bid. So what was the magic about this one? Carl Zuger, I guess?
Thank you. Well, we had six staff members that evaluated the proposal, and when we looked at it, we broke it down into relative experience, experience in developing arts and culture master plan. And I'll just say this, in both of those categories, all six, with the exception of one, gave them maximum amount of points. And the one that didn't was two points less in a 30-point option. And I think that really was the key, was just their vast amount of experience. I think that if you read the proposal, it really was big picture, really tied to many of the issues that the Arts and Culture Committee's been speaking to, and really the needs that they have to have in order to move forward. I think that they bring the experience that will help steward that process, and I think that's exactly what's needed in this situation.
I ask the question because a lot of people won't have all that background, and I think it's good for people to hear that. You know, and you're saying basically experience is the key factor.
Exactly.
Thank you. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess this is a question for staff. Where will the additional money come from?
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, we're actually, this is a worst-case budget amendment. The CFO I know and Director Zuger have already been discussing potential ways to bring this back down into $15,000, what the budgeted amount was. And so we're looking at this as a preemptive opportunity so that we can award the contract as it's written, but we expect to go back and try to whittle this back a little bit. There might be a few things from the standpoint of travel or from coordinating some meetings that staff could take back on from what was proposed, but we would take it out of fund balance for whatever the remaining amount might be, over $15,000.
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? Commissioner Kembensee?
I'd just like to thank staff. I do think they picked the right one when I looked through this. I think two of the reference cities they mentioned I have been to recently and seen what's going on, and there's some great things happening. So I do think the scoring was appropriate, and I also appreciate staff looking at ways to maybe cut that back more and fit it in the $15,000. So I think it's a win-win. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Two things. We did, of course, commit to the arts and culture community. We would do this. We would bring in the consultant and have the report done and work them through it. So I think it's one we need to follow through on. Second, I think I actually was at a conference and heard her present, and extremely impressive. So I'm very anxious to see the product that will come out of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner for further discussion? Any other commissioner? Seeing none. There's a motion by Commissioner Snyder, seconded by Commissioner Coyne, to accept a recommendation of Agenda Number Ten, approve Christine Harris Connections Creative Community Builders to conduct a community planning process for arts and culture master plan in a amount not to exceed $17,810. Approve a budget adjustment and direct the city attorney to draft a contract. Commissioners, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. We'll move to Number Eleven, South Front Street Traffic Markings. City Clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, the city commission requested the city manager to direct staff to study traffic calming measures along the Front Street corridor through the DDA district, excuse me. The Marquette Police Department took the lead on the project in consultation with the Engineering, Public Works, Community Development, and DDA. The group devised two recommendations for immediate implementation. The first recommendation was the placement of warning signs to be located at select crosswalks on the road center line. These signs were purchased by the DDA and installed by Public Works. The second recommendation is to implement a traffic marking design from the Engineering Department that will reconfigure the lanes on South Front Street between Spring Street and Fisher. The reconfiguration would include the removal of existing lane markings as well as the painting of new markings. The only contractor able to perform this type of service in the Upper Peninsula was asked to quote the job according to specifications developed by the city engineering department. The original quote for the entire project came in above the budgeted amount. In order to move forward with the project, the quantity of work was adjusted from the original quote to match the available budgeted amount. A summary of the as-quoted unit prices is attached. Fiscal effect: The FY 1314 operating budget allocated $10,000 in the major street fund for this project. Recommendation: Award a bid in the amount not to exceed $10,000 at the unit prices quoted for center line and intersection painting on South Front Street to PK Contracting Incorporated of Troy, Michigan, being the sole provider of traffic marking in the Upper Peninsula. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Commissioners, Captain Blake Rebo, Uniform Patrol Officer's captain, is present for any questions. He would like that the commissioners have any thoughts or concerns. He would be more than happy to address them. Commissioner Snyder?
I'm going to move that we approve the recommendation as read.
Thank you. Is there a second? Commissioner Ryan?
I'll support it.
Commissioner Snyder?
Sure. I think this is a great project. I think the signs that we've seen downtown have helped significantly in slowing down traffic and making it safer for pedestrians. I've had a lot of great comments on it. I think this is, a next phase is a really, really good step. I know that the public can't see the maps that I'm looking at right now about how the lines would be done. I think it's a great improvement in that area. I'm in that area quite a bit, and it does get fairly dangerous. I think it'll slow it down. I do, however, think that it's a temporary measure. This is paint. You know, it's not going to be seen in the wintertime, as well as, even though the paint is going to be there, there's still no physical barriers, even like those bright yellow signs that are down there. There's something physical that slows people down, and this is still going to be a wide-open intersection. So I hope that as the commission goes into its next budget cycle and the cycle after that, we actually look at reducing the size of the streets and actually road diets. I think this is, again, a wonderful first step, but I would like to see a road diet. Follow this up in a year or two, just to make it even safer for pedestrians in there. But I appreciate staff coming forward with this. I think this will be a great improvement.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Appreciate the quick response on this. This was just brought up a short time ago, you know, this year, and already we have, you know, we've seen things in place. But I'd like to use my time to ask Captain Rebo...
Captain, could you come up to the lectern?
Since a lot of people don't know what it is we're even talking about, maybe just a brief overview of what you're planning to do, what the changes are that you have in mind?
Sure, Your Honor.
What the, why, you know, what the benefit of that will be?
Commissioners, we've seen great success...
Could you identify yourself for the records, please?
I'm sorry?
I know, but I mean, as far as his picture being up on the screen?
Sure.
And the public being able to see?
Sure, I'm a...
And also for the city clerk to know who's up there speaking. Thank you.
You're welcome. Captain Blake Rebo with the Marquette City Police Department?
You have the floor, sir.
Okay. What we're doing here is I'd like to commend Keith Whittington and Scott Kembensee, along with Dave Stensis from the planning, on developing this effort on calming traffic in this specific intersection. Basically, what we're looking at doing is making this intersection very similar to what we have on Wright Street and on Washington Street, which is a center turn lane from the roundabout to Spring Street. And what that'll do is it'll hopefully avoid the two-car abreast coming down that hill into Marquette, and also the speeding going out of Marquette on that front street, mainly in the Barregas Street area.
This is already a two-block area we're looking at, isn't it, from Fisher to Spring?
Actually, we're going to start it from the roundabout. Once you get off that roundabout...
Yes, it's even further.
Yep, exactly. That lane will be developed as you come out of the roundabout, and it'll extend all the way to Spring Street, which is by Getz's. That was the recommendation from Keith, the city engineer, Keith Whittington, and we all concurred that that was going to be the best plan for this stretch of roadway. Instead of cutting it off at Barregas Avenue and then having Spring Street remain the same, it would be best to carry into Spring Street.
What about the concerns Commissioner Snyder raised about, you know, winter and people?
Well, I think, I think as people get familiar with it before the wintertime, and we, you know, monitor it both through the police department and through other resources, hopefully we'll get people to kind of recognize this change and follow the rules. You know, like Commissioner Snyder said, it's an area that, I think this is a beginning stage to looking at this area, especially with the increased pedestrian traffic in the downtown Marquette area. It may be something that the commission and the city needs to address in the future, but I think right now it's a good step for what we want to do right now.
Commissioner Kembensee?
Thank you. Two thoughts, I guess. My first one is, I guess I would caution on narrowing streets too much. Certainly Barregas is pretty wide, but if anyone has ever been riding or driving down Fourth Street, two cars with a bike, at least one bike on there, and your serendipity brings you to the right point, it's a little scary. So in knowing our bike traffic, I guess, right now I'm okay with the lights, but I guess I've always imagined maybe a blinking light as you come off of the roundabout. I don't know if you looked into other options. I know this is probably the cheapest, but, you know, certainly something that would prompt drivers, I guess, more than paint to slow down. I guess, what is the cost of something like that?
Well, I think we've taken some pretty good steps throughout the city with the laddered crosswalks at most of the intersections. That's a fairly recent addition. Scott was able to do that through his budget to a lot of the intersections. Those were never throughout the city like they are now. There are areas that we can look at as far as warning motorists coming into town regarding the high pedestrian traffic. But I think right now, at this step, at this stage, for what we were kind of tasked with developing, I think this is a good start, and then we can kind of evaluate this as it goes and see where we need to make improvements. And in the drawings, I think you've noted Keith did paint some, I don't want to call them bike lanes, but on the far side, on each side going up Front Street, there will be some designated lanes to make the actual traffic lane smaller, but give you a little bit more on that outside should bicyclists need to use that, so.
And then, just one other thing, I know sometimes you guys put the speed sign out where motors can see.
Yep.
I guess it might be nice to see that on top of the Front Street hill more.
Yeah, and those are definitely options that we could maybe bring forward to the commission in the future. I know some of the cities throughout Wisconsin and Michigan do have the permanent radar signs in certain areas. That may be something we may need to look at down the road, but I think, you know, after we get this in place and everything painted and we monitor it, we might have a better idea what areas we may need to make improvements on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Snyder?
Sure. In your description of some of the painting that was going in, maybe I missed it somehow, but there's also quite a bit of white crosshatching going in as well to try and, I guess, squeeze up some of the congestion at Barregas and Front, yes?
Yes, 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 exactly.
And then, I just wanted to make sure the public was aware of that. And then, I didn't think about that. The white striped line that will kind of designate a bike lane that's going in, I actually have a very serious concern there, which is a lot of people end up coming south on Front Street, and once they pass Barregas Street, if they follow that bike line, it takes them as a bike straight into the roundabout. And so if they pass, what is that, street right there, the last...
Fisher Street?
If they pass Fisher...
Rock Street?
They have, or Rock... They have, or Rock, they have no way of getting out of that.
Right.
So, I really, really recommend or encourage you guys, pass those streets. You put just a big sign that says "No Bikes" or something to keep bicyclists safe, because I've actually not thinking about it. Caught myself in that before and had to take the roundabout on a bike twice. And it's not, not enjoyable. So, please keep that in consideration when you're painting.
Absolutely.
Cool, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Well, Captain, I want to also commend you. You really, you and your committee has done a great job and you're on a roll. I have two, I'd like you to continue such a great job and I, Washington and Third Street is a, I wasn't joking when I said, do I have to, I have to choose cross the street or die? That was not a joke. That is serious. And it really has been tremendously better on Front Street walk. I mean, that's just great. And I think we ought to do something to, at that other intersection. And this is probably out of your jurisdiction, but some citizens have raised grave concerns about McClellan and US 41. If you try to follow the bike path, you're taking your life in your hands literally riding across and much less walking. And we've kind of talked about that and I wonder if I could ask the city manager where that is right now in terms of trying to solve that problem.
Thank you, sir. Staff and I have met with the state transportation folks and we're anticipating that they're going to come back with a design and that they're going to come back potentially with the ability to take action this year if we can find some cooperative way to put in the required infrastructure. They're right now looking at the end of their construction season and so, as of today, they're not able to commit to exactly when the project will take place, but they've affirmed that pedestrian markings are necessary at that site. And we're hopeful that we'll be receiving specific requirements from them sometime this month that we'll be able to evaluate. And if it's something we can accommodate within our existing street budgets, we'll move forward promptly. If it's something potentially that, that presents a window of opportunity for the city to partner with MDOT, we'll bring that back before the commission and make it a priority.
You still have the floor.
Well, thank you. I, I was not sure whether that had been dropped by the state and it hadn't, so thank you. And again, thank you for your efforts and hope you continue to have good success on some of the other problem intersections. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Amy.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to concur with my fellow commissioners. I think it's going to be, this is a real benefit to people who are crossing that street and it's showing them that, that their city is, is giving them some real benefit. Just one question, the, the little pylons or whatever that are in the street now, they're going to continue in the, in the street?
Yeah, what, what those pylons, basically they're, they're able to be either screwed into the, the pavement, which we did, because we were a little concerned about possible them being stolen. But I don't think that's going to be an option necessarily all through the winter based on plowing efforts. So, they do come with a permanent or a temporary base, which is a fairly heavily weighted base, and I think we're going to try to work with the Downtown Development Authority to make sure that those are at least in the roadway during high traffic times, you know, basically during the day where there's a lot of pedestrian activity. And then maybe their crews could remove them later in the evening to make sure that they're not, end up somewhere else in somebody's front room.
I was thinking of Scott, Scott's crews left some big windows down the center of the street. It might, you know, calm the traffic even further.
Like a temporary barrier.
I think the, the issue of, of the, the pavement markings in winter is, isn't really that big a deal, because Scott's crews keep the streets pretty clean and usually we can see the markings. In fact, I think the only problem with those pavement markings, sometimes some of those can get slippery in winter. Those, those big white, wide crosswalk markings can get a little slick, so. But I, I think it's, it's just great. I think we're, we're doing some great things there and, and it's just, you know, it's been in just a couple matter of months, so I think you folks have been giving the citizens real value. Thank you.
I'd like to thank Scott and both Keith and Mr. Stackwitz and his crew for all being involved also.
Commissioner, Commissioner Ryan?
I guess I just want to remind us that, that, you know, we're, we're doing the right thing. You know, we're kind of walking the walk here. We talk about wanting to have a, a downtown and to rebuild the downtown and support the downtown, and that's really what's happening here, because there are a lot of people who just want to get from the south side of town to the north and they couldn't care less about that. And I understand that, but, but, you know, they're going through our downtown and so we're, we're recognizing that this is part of our downtown. We want people to be able to walk from anywhere downtown to the lakefront, you know, to the waterfront, wherever they want to be. So, it's, again, just pleased to see that we're taking the problem seriously and looking for solutions.
Thank you. Any other commissioner at this time? City manager, you have anything for the captain? One of the things, seeing that you're the chairman of the Traffic and Parking Committee?
Correct. I'm the liaison. I'm the city liaison.
Liaison. And so, anyways, you know what's going on all the time with the traffic flows and we're not to put park, no parking signs and to install, you know, parking only, but one of the things, and, and you hear this all the time, like, as you expand, like on, looking at Washington Street from front to forth because of all the pedestrian crossing, are you looking at adding more of those green pedestrian EO right of ways?
Um, it's a possibility. Those are mainly, if you notice in, in a lot of the other communities that are, are having those type of signage, there, there are areas where there's non-signaled crosswalks. There, there are areas where they, where they don't have a, like a stoplight or, or some type of signal. You know, it's an intersection, it's a high-traffic intersection, basically like where we have it right now on Main Street and Front. There's no signal there to, to direct traffic and that's why those signs are placed there to help slow traffic through those areas. So, I'm, we, we may look at expanding that, we may look at other options. I mean, you know, I know some of those intersections, like Commissioner Coyne had mentioned, can get a little sketchy, especially with turning on the right hand on the red lights, especially during busy hours, but those are things that we could work maybe a little bit better on with enforcement through the police department and better educating the public on, on the rules of the road regarding those type of intersections.
Exactly, because I know that people on Third, I mean motorists on Third Street between Bluff and Washington headed south and they're going to turn right onto Washington, they think they have the right of way even though pedestrians are already in the crosswalk.
Right.
And a pedestrian does have the right of way, so how do you educate them? Now, those green markers that you have does address that, the pedestrians, EO to pedestrians in the crosswalk, so.
Right, and there's other signage that we could look at, maybe implementing on, on some of the poles in those areas to, to, to make motorists a little bit more aware of, of once pedestrians that are in the crosswalk, they must yield to, so.
Well, just a second. City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I only wanted to point out that, you know, in the consent agenda, we just picked the vendor that's going to be doing the citywide traffic study. And I, I know Blake's a little bit of concern kind of overrunning the headlights at this point for that effort. There's going to be a very comprehensive look at all the different modes of transportation in the city and how they need to coexist. And these are all suggestions I know that he's been queuing up as, as part of his duty as the liaison on that committee. Hopefully, we'll bring them back and I believe part of the plan will be very similar to what we did with the roundabout. There will be Channel 21 videos, there will be a lot of public input opportunities, a lot of education associated with getting the word out for some of the changes that no doubt will come from that study. So, I appreciate Captain Rebo giving us a little preview of what we're hoping to see, but hopefully when we get the study completed, we'll be able to give a very comprehensive answer.
Thank you, city manager. That's why I wanted my fellow commissioners to ask, because the captain did take time out of his busy evening schedule to come here and for us not to ask him any questions would have upset him very much. So, with that, fellow commissioners, any other questions for the captain?
No.
Thank you, Captain. You're dismissed at this time.
Thank you.
Commissioners, there's a motion by Commissioner Schneider, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to accept a recommendation of Agenda 11, award a bid in amount not to exceed $10,000 at the unit prices quoted for center line and intersection painting on South Front Street to PK Contracting, Inc. of Troy, Michigan, being the sole provider of traffic marking in the Upper Peninsula. Commissioners, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. With that, we'll move to number 12 bids for West Washington Streetscape Varietya-
Veridia.
Thank you. Development Project. City clerk?
Thank you, Your Honor. Background, the Veridia Mixed Use Development is a multi-phase, multi-building project at the original Bunnybred Site. A brownfield plan was approved for the project, which included public infrastructure, streetscape access points, traffic signal upgrades, and pavement marking realignment. The MBRA will be issuing bonds to finance the public improvement and will capture brownfield TIF revenues for the bond payment. The City of Marquette Engineering Department will provide oversight and administration. Bids for the project were opened on August 29th, 2013. Two contractors responded to our request for bids. The results are summarized below with the engineer's estimate being $167,848.60 and Associated Constructors LLC submitted a bid of $280,105.53 and Overstar Incorporated submitted a bid of $289,661.40. Tabulation and checking of the bids found no errors. The MBRA has reviewed and approved the attached resolution at their meeting of September 5th, 2013. Fiscal effects, the MBRA will issue tax increment bonds in the amount not to exceed $750,000 to finance the cost of this and other public infrastructure improvements for various eligible activities for the Veridia Development Liberty Way project and capture brownfield TIF revenues for the bond payments. Recommendation, award a contract for the West Washington Streetscape Project to Associated Constructors LLC in the amount of $280,105.53 at unit prices bid. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you, city clerk. And just to let my fellow commissioners know, Dave Capana, that's on the brownfield board, is here to ask any questions that we may have. So, commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Combenzi?
I move that we award a contract for the West Washington Streetscape Project to Associated Constructors LLC in the amount of $280,105.53 at the unit prices bid.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I'll support the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Combenzi?
Just a question for our city engineer. The, the engineer's estimate was quite a bit lower than what came in. Any, any thoughts on why?
I've got all kinds of thoughts, but. Three main factors, I guess. One being the time of year. We're getting towards the end of construction season. Contractors right now are so busy, they can't even finish what they got now, just, so they're just swamped, so there's really no competition out there. Other factor is the small size of the job, so that has a lot to do with it. So, putting those factors together just increases the cost. It's just what it is.
I didn't, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. With the two coming in so close, I mean, it's obvious that, you know, their pencils were sharp, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Combenzi. Commissioner Ryan?
These were all things that we agreed to when we first went into this project, but maybe you could just, either you or Dave, take a minute to explain what it is we're talking about here. We're really talking about the sidewalk on Washington Street and traffic signal upgrades.
Yeah, this part of the project, there's actually two phases to this project. This would be the first phase, which has to do with the, the area fronting the new variety of development there. So, there'll be a new sidewalk, streetscape, which would be trees and some plantings in between the boulevard and the curb. I'll be doing some major improvements with the traffic signals. Right now, it's a diagonal system. We're going to a box type of system, which you're kind of see a lot now on the US 41, where you actually got signals on all four sides now. There's also going to be some lane realignment and traffic marking upgrades through there. So, that's basically what this, this phase of the project is.
And this will be the only entrance to that whole development, right?
Yes.
So, and, and so they will have the benefit of the stoplight and-
Yep.
-that project. The, the bike path connection, that's in the other phase of the project?
Yeah, that would be the, I guess you could consider it the second phase as far as the city's involved in. And that's having access on the bike path to the new development from behind the development there, so have a direct access link to it.
When you say phase, is this, does this phase take care of all the Washington Street work?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as the city's public infrastructure portion of it, yes.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner and Amy?
Thank you, Your Honor. But Commissioner Ryan, the answer I was looking for.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Commissioner Coyne?
Well, I have to ask this. I think I know the answer, but what, since the, the contractors have so much work now in their high bidding, what would be the consequence if we pushed this off till the next construction season? Is that a realistic thing to do or not possible for the completion of the project?
It's kind of a delicate answer there. I guess how I could answer that is, the developer would like to, I think, have his new building opened up sometime next couple of months without this work that we're going to do as far as the access, ingress and egress, the traffic signal upgrades, the lane realignments. It really wouldn't be feasible or safe for him to open up to get access onto Washington Street.
Okay, thank you.
Any other commissioner at this time? Commissioner Ryan?
We should point out, this is being, will be paid through, through the TIF, so it will be paid through tax funds that are generated by the development itself, not out of the, the general fund.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you. Commissioner and Amy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I guess, you know, this project being $100,000 over budget, how is that going to affect the other phases? Is there going to be enough money in the project to do the other phase? We've got $750,000. Did we put in a contingency in that, in that amount to, to, that'll alleviate this overage?
From what I understand from Matt McClellan, who's part of the brownfield group there, they had more than enough money to cover this. They anticipated it to be like $300,000 or so with contingency, so they had enough money already budgeted for it.
Okay. Just another quick question, it's kind of off the topic, but when you do engineering design for this, then does the brownfield reimburse, verse your department for, for those efforts or?
That I know of, no.
City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. No, we consider this an improvement to city assets, to a city street, so it's something that we, we hold on to the authority for designing city streets as opposed to-
Yeah, there's a difference between authority and payment.
No, no, I understand that. The, the payment certainly comes out of the TIF, I think as Engineer Whittington's indicated, the money's there, but we would look at improving this street, no doubt, for any, any development that may have gone in there, whether it was Veridia or any, any other, other developer who might have expressed interest in that site. So, we will have to have upgraded the traffic signals, we'll have to upgraded the sidewalk, upgraded the city, city streets. We try to do it, there, there's nothing, there's, correct me if I'm wrong, Keith, but there's no appurtenance that's custom for the Veridia project. This is simply realigning the streets and it's the standard kind of city design work that's going in there.
That's correct, yes.
There, we don't have any kind of custom gateways or, or archways or anything like that that might go in that a private developer might like to see to set off that development. So, this is really just improving that intersection now that we know we're going to have south to northbound traffic coming into it.
Commissioner Amy, anything for- Commissioner Namy, anything further? Thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
I have a question. Is the bike path access part of this expense, or is that a whole different issue?
That's part of that $750,000.
Oh, not the 280?
No.
Okay.
280 is just for the Washington Street part of the project.
How, you know, is it just a little sidewalk going onto the bike path, or is it a big, fancy, beautiful tree and flower and stuff? Why I ask that is I just rode by the new bank, Peninsula Bank, and they have an access to, they built, did they build that themselves? They have an access now to the bike path?
Yes, that was part of their site plan, yes.
That was part of what?
That was part of their site plan, build their own access.
Which they paid for.
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Two points, partly in response to Commissioner, not response, but maybe an answer, I think, from what I recall, this would be a fairly complex, not just a simple little shoot-down path to the bike path, but I think there are handicap accessible and some other things that come into play to make it work.
It's going to be, like you said, it's going to be rather involved with walls and handicap access and so forth, the street trees and all that.
Now, I was just going to say, Your Honor, Mr. Campana was here, and I wonder if all of his points have been answered. We've asked a lot of questions, and if he might have answered some differently, or if he would still like a chance to say something.
He did nail the head.
Okay.
He answered everything. Exactly right.
We knew he was right, but we just didn't know if you had more that you wanted to add.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner, further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask a question. There's a motion by Commissioner Combenzi, seconded by Commissioner Ryan, to accept a recommendation of agenda number 12, awarded contract for the West Washington Streetscape project to Associated Contractors LLC in the amount of $280,105.53 at the unit prices bid. Commissioners, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Oppose? Motion passes seven to zero. Thank you. At this time, we'll move to public comment. Comments should be limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comment. If you'd already stated your name and physical address previously, you don't have to do it at this public comment. Anyone wishing to address the city commission at this time? Anyone wishing to address the city commission at this time?
These are my opinions. August 12, Mr. Vida told me of his plans to restore the damaged Founder's green space this fall. Because this needless loss concerns many residents, Mr. Vida is asked in his closing comment to tell us what restoration is planned and how this will replace 20- to 30-year-old trees. We'd also discussed indigenous plantings just north of Wetstone Creek for aesthetics as well as for erosion control. August 26, on a BLP increase, you started off on the right track by discussing all the necessary data to arrive at a sound decision. You even considered the plight of low-income people. In fact, Mr. Cohen admitted that most of those who were for the increase are the ones who can pay the most easily. He suggested delaying your vote until October 28 to give us 90 days to adjust, and no vote on August 26 would force the BLP to return with another plan, he said. The attorney then said, "You must vote for or against what the BLP presents, an eight-and-a-half percent increase for each of the next three years." This is why you needed to vote down the proposal, as advised, on August 26, to give our public utility a due chance to return with a one-year option in plenty of time for your October 28 vote. Instead, Mr. Ryan motioned to vote October 28 to approve all three years of increases. He read his lengthy, pre-written explanation indicating that he'd made his mind up in advance of the public hearing. After a long pause that nearly killed the motion, Mr. Cohen seconded in error, for the sake of discussion. At some point, all seven of you lost the presence of mind to pursue the year-at-a-time option. Late in your discussion, Mr. Schneider finally mentioned it, but this idea was lost again when Mr. Cohen and Schneider himself said they'd vote for three years of increases on October 28. Any notion of taking one year at a time vanished. In the end, all of you disregarded low-income families. Nor did anyone mention how certain students and residents will fall subject to double and triple whammies as a result of the city's $320,000 projected increase over three years plus NMU's $620,000. You needed either not second the motion or to vote it down. You urged to reschedule a hearing to defeat the motion, so to give our public-owned utility the needed time to present a one-year option in advance of your October 28 vote and to analyze the results in a year. Yes, BLP managers can better plan if granted three years of increases this year. However, if their data is correct, they'll receive all three increases anyway. The year-at-a-time option offers the versatility of adjusting the increased percentages for years two and three and to account for the myriad of variables that can arise. All parties involved had everything to gain and nothing to lose. You usually perform better on business items. This time, you took your eyes off the ball on a matter that affects us all. And what's the answer to Ms. Combenzi's question of where we can cut $107,000 in each of the next three years' budgets?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Anyone else wishing to address the commission at this time? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of public comment. Turn it over to my fellow city commissioners. Commissioner Combenzi?
Thank you. Again, I'd just like to apologize to my fellow commissioners and the public for being late. I was at a school board meeting, so still doing business. The only thing I want to bring up, I guess, two things, very successful Beer Fest weekend, lots of people and from out of town, in fact, several conversations I had with people was surrounding the economic advantage that that brings to our community. So I enjoyed meeting people from all over the state, from out of the state, and hearing their comments about what they liked best about Marquette. The second thing, there is a grant, the Michigan Council for Arts and Cultural Affairs has a rather large capital improvement grant, up to $75,000. And I know that the Beautification and Restoration Committee would like to make universal access to where the statue is now, and I would urge city staff and certainly the city manager to look into this grant. The deadline is September, actually, I think it's October 1. It's coming up quick, and it does provide for opportunity, I guess, to capture a lot of state funding with this. So I don't know if staff has looked into it, but certainly, just want to put it on their radar because they only come up once a year. They're competitive, but I think we've got a project, should the city want to go that direction, basically with most of the funding behind it, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Combenzi. Commissioner Schneider?
Sure, just a few comments. First, I want to thank Mr. Verito for bringing up the BLP vote. I'll say right off the bat, that was, this is probably one of the more difficult things I've dealt with as a commissioner. And in hindsight, and I'm saying this for the benefit of the BLP and the public out there, in hindsight, I'm wishing that we would have voted on it on the spot, and I'm wishing that we would have turned it down. I also want to ask Mr. Verito to show us some of the respect that we try and show you. It is quite distracting to listen to somebody reading out loud when I'm trying to speak to the public and the rest of my commissioners about things. But back to the BLP for a sec. Besides my feelings on our vote, you know, since we made that vote, I've received a letter telling us about all of the things that they're going to have to cut back on or that they are cutting back on because of our vote to postpone this for three months. And now they've come into our first public comment to tell us all of the things that they're going to have to hold back on, and they're going to have to cut because of the vote. I've received letters from some of their employees saying that they might have to go on layoff and all of these things. And I'm really starting to get very frustrated with the cavalier attitude of the BLP on this one. I understand that they're in a difficult position, and according to what they had said in front of us at the last meeting, it's their fault they're in this position. And it takes some real audacity to come in here and tell us that it's our fault that they're in this position to have to cut. And I recognize that we need to be able to move the prices upwards to be able to cover their costs, but I think that the attitude about it is exceedingly frustrating to work with. You know, I'm not sure right now how to vote on October 28, but it does make it very difficult to find an amicable solution. I really wish that they would have listened to some of us when we said, you know, let's just do the one-year thing, and that'll give us some time to figure out where to go without having to delay three months and, you know, possibly turn it down again. So I just wanted to be able to let those thoughts out and thank Mr. Verito for bringing it up and reminding me that, yeah, the BLP issue is an issue at hand. I appreciate all the commissioners deliberating over it. I know that that conversation was difficult, but I think that's how we do our job.
Thank you, Commissioner Schneider. Commissioner Namy?
Thank you, Your Honor. Commissioner Schneider brings up a good point. Certainly, I support the BLP increase, and I think if we were to do it in one year, we're going to have a 25% increase versus an 8% increase, so, because they need the money. And I do have some concerns, like Commissioner Schneider, about, I don't know if it's cavalier attitude, but the, you know, all these changes that are suddenly coming, I'm not saying that they're not needed, but, you know, I would assume that in October, we will vote. Perhaps one thing we could have, maybe the city manager could request from the BLP, their audit isn't completed yet, but I'm certain their financial statements are, their basic revenue and expense statements, balance sheet, et cetera. It would be, I think it would be good for us to see those statements, even though they're, I'm sure the audit report hasn't been completed yet, but, you know, obviously, at the end of the fiscal year, they've got those completed for submission to their auditors, so they have to be shared with us also at this point. I think they would provide us information on the need for the rate increase. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Namy. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Just a couple of quick things, if I can. Blues Festival was fantastic. For folks that weren't there, they really had a hit this year, and I think the open party, the concert, the free concert on Friday was absolutely terrific. They had the best closing band there. Can't think the name of it, something Gorillaz.
Gas House.
Gas House Gorillaz. They were absolutely fantastic, and it was truly a great event for the community, I think, and then one that I certainly give them full credit for. Likewise, the great work that the Beautification Committee is doing, as they're moving forward with the Father Marquette statue and doing so many other things in the city. They truly deserve all of our support. I certainly do support the BLP in terms of their funding request. I agree, there's some things I'd like to see, but certainly, this is a business decision, it's a business case, and you've only got so much money in the bucket, and when the bucket is empty, you're not going to do things. And that's exactly what they're telling us, and we have to realize, we've enjoyed very low power rates for a very low time, or rather, a very long time. And all things need to be taken in perspective. The rates will certainly go up. Does that make it unconscionable in terms of the rest of the city, or rather, the rest of the Upper Peninsula, the rest of the state? It doesn't. We're still among the lowest anywhere. So we have to look at everything in perspective. All that said, October 28 will be coming up. Nothing further, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Stonehouse. Commissioner Ryan?
Well, I didn't plan to say anything about it tonight, but since the rest of you have raised points, I think we're playing with fire. You know, there's a board elected by the citizens of Marquette to run the Board of Light and Power. They've made a decision that to operate, they need this revenue. They've hired a professional consultant to come in and study the data. We haven't done that. We're just sitting here kind of winging it. "I don't think you need it. I don't think you need it." Well, you know, they need it. And, you know, I'll just say it again, we're playing with fire. This is the, as Commissioner Stonehouse said, this is one of the lowest-cost utilities anywhere. And it'd be different if they had a history of lavishly spending their money. But, you know, we're putting them in a position of not having adequate funds. If something unusual happens there, they could be in real trouble. And I think for them to come here and tell us that is not wrong. I really don't. And so, as I said, I didn't plan to speak on this, but, you know, we've, this community has elected a board to run that. We have a very small role to play, which is to approve their rate increase and, or not approve it, but I think they've made their case. You know, this commission has raised water rates at least that much, you know, and certainly we're concerned about what impact this has on citizens. But what is the impact if this power plant runs into serious problems? So, anyway, I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Cohen?
Well, I'll also chime in. I'm not offended by the Board of Light and Power's demonstration to us the needs and the problems that they're facing. I mean, that's a prudent thing to do, but I don't think the world is going to end between now and October 28. I don't, and I don't think the motion would have, even one year would have passed, so that's why I asked to put it off, to give people time to adjust their finances accordingly. And I intend to fully support the motion on October 28. I have two comments. The KBIC and Sioux Tribes tonight, through our, the city pass-through, gave to very deserving organizations over $250,000, which is just huge. It was in small sums, but it added up to a lot of money and a lot of good. And regarding the proclamation regarding texting while driving, I would just add, texting while walking. I actually had someone at Econo Foods, I saw, I was pulling in, and I actually saw them coming, they were texting, and I stopped my car, and the young man ran into the side of my car. Now, is that anymore, I mean, fortunately, I saw him, but that's just as dangerous as texting while driving, texting while walking across the street, across Econo parking lot, that's just stupid. And I would hope that people would, you know, realize that's not very smart to do. And he didn't put a dent in my car, but he was kind of embarrassed, I must say. That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Cohen. And with that, it was just about a year ago, Captain Blake Revo recalls about 7:30 in the morning on West College and H Street, a girl was walking across the intersection taxiing, and she walked into one of the school buses and rode to the high school. And she was delivered to the emergency room due to the fact that she was taxiing and not paying attention. So that is not unusual, and Commissioner Cohen does have a valid point, and Captain Blake has proof of it on his personal injury accident report. So anyways, with that, on September 15, wastewater treatment plant supervisor Mark O'Neill will have 20 years of service, and September 18, Marquette Fire Captain Steve Hodges will have 25 years of service. September 24, heavy equipment operator, yeah, I forgot to put his name down. I'll get you next week, next commission meeting, but senior moments, sorry about that. And on September 26, patrol K-9 officer Todd Collins will have five years of service. Again, we'd like to congratulate these employees on their anniversary. And I too would like to congratulate the organizers of the 5th Annual Michigan Brewers' Guide for Holding the UP Fall Beer Fest at Marquette's Lower Harbor and Matson Park, with 3,500 tickets sold. Five years ago, when I attended the first one, and there was 800 people there, I thought, "That's an awesome crowd." There's 800 of us, and five years later, it's 3,500, and that, so it just shows you that there is interest in that business. And also, I'd like to, at this time, ask the city manager, Bill Vida, to announce when his next community office hours will be, allow the location time, plus any other subjects he'd like to address. Thank you. City manager?
Thank you, Your Honor. Well, I'd like to share also my thanks for all the great support that the volunteers in the community gave this weekend. We had, in addition to the Beer Fest, the Exterra Triathlon, we had the UPAS Strut Your Mutt, and they're reminders that for any taste, for anything that people like to do here in Marquette, all you have to do is go out and look for it, because there's a huge amount of community support standing right next to you, who's making all these great things happen. And so, please... And so, please, keep it up, keep the great work up. That's what makes Marquette different and that's what makes us really special. The next community office hours are going to be this Wednesday, 9/11, at Marquette Public Library in the Community Conference Room on the west side of the building. And so, we'd look forward to having people show up anytime between 10:00 and 12:00, share their great ideas and reflections. Also, like to respond to the resident interest on the Founder's Landing. We've gotten some feedback as well from many people. We're waiting till towards the end of the fall planting season to try to take that on. Arborist Alberts has got that on his list of things to do. And nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you. And on September 24, heavy equipment operator Luke Chapman will have his first years of service. Thank you, Luke. And with that, we're adjourned.